Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Common Council. It is June 4th at 6:02 PM. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins. Ms. Young. Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winterstrand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton. Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We have ten in attendance at roll call. We have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. So, the purpose of this meeting tonight is for the Charter Revision Commission to present their recommendations to the Common Council. And so, as such, we do not have public participation tonight. We will have public particip- participation at all of our subsequent meetings, and we will go over that schedule after the presentation. I would like to take a moment to thank the staff for providing us with hard copies of the charter. It's quite a, quite a task to do that, but we will be able to have that so that we can go through it very carefully with a fine-tooth comb, not tonight, of course, but. So, so at this point, I am going to go ahead and turn it over to the Chair of the Charter Revision Commission, Tyler Bearburn, to present to us.
Thank you so much for having me. It sounds okay.
We can hear you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you all for having us this evening, and thank you for putting together another Charter Revision Commission, giving us another chance to look at the city's constitution and recommend some changes to further improve our government. So, we have a number of members here with us tonight, Joe Bennett, Carl Vickers, Tom Evans in the back, and Clark in Buckhamstead.
Doesn't deserve a seat at the table?
Pardon?
He doesn't deserve a seat at the table?
I mean, or the most, I thought it was perhaps a personal seat.
Grab a chair here, John.
Yeah, there's more chairs.
So, yeah. Thank you to everyone who was able to work on this and is here this evening, and thank you all to Asper, and Irene, and James, and the rest of the staff for helping us enormously throughout the process.
Tyler, the audio is coming in a little light, I hear on the recording. Would it be all right to, or if that's somewhere, can you go to the podium? Anyone who's on Zoom, is it better now when Tyler's talking? Yes?
Yeah.
All right, then use the mic.
All right.
Okay.
So, I will, I will try to be economical in time. I know we don't have a ton this evening, so I think the plan is to present the changes as forth in the, in the transmittal letter, so we'll just kind of start from the top and then go through. I just want to make a quick note that when I refer to me or the commission, not every one of these decisions was unanimous, so I'm not speaking for everybody. There were certain things that were, there were certain things that were not, so reference to the commission recommended does not necessarily mean every single member of the commission supported that decision. So, to go from the top and work our way down, Article 1, there were no proposed changes. In Article 2, the, the commission, the Fire Commission, the 2023 Charter Revision Commission did a, a pretty heavy lift there on updating some of the definitions. In this version, there were a few edits and revisions, particularly around capital budget and capital improvement plan in Section 2.2. In Article 3, there were some, some pretty significant recommendations there. In Section 3, 3D1, the commission recommended increasing the number of council members from the current 15 to 20. The five-at-large was remained the same, and the recommendation was to add one additional member to each of the council districts. You'd have three in each of five districts. The thought there was that it would perhaps make it a little easier to manage the workload, in addition to giving an, this is kind of related to something that was not recommended, but perhaps give an opportunity for minority parties to have a additional chance to get representation on the council. I should note that minority party representation was not approved to put forth as a recommendation, but there were some steps that I think we thought could open that possibility, you know, in Norwalk's recent political, recent, the 10 years that I've been here, there had been a number of split councils and mayors of different parties. So, minority party representation was not recommended at this time, but we did think that this was perhaps a chance to increase the opportunity for the non-majority party to pick up some seats. In Section 3, 4A1, the commission recommended a four-year term for mayor from the current two-year term following the 2029 election, and the town clerk as well, four-year term following the 2029 election, and a four-year term for common council members following the 2031 election. Section 3, 4A1 also contains clarification that formalized the practice of documenting the reapportionment of council districts by ordinance. In Article 4, Section 4, 4C, 3, B, and C, there was clarification added for the transfer of appeals provisions pertaining to the assessments and damages of the taking of land from special acts that had previously been at the end of the charter. Section 4, 7C, there were minor modifications to the authority of the council to establish compensation for all officers and employees of the city by recognizing the requirements of collective bargaining agreements. We also eliminated, we recommended eliminating language requiring a referendum for council salary increases since the general statute is already provided. In Section 4, 10, the commission recommended reducing the percentage of electors required to sign a referendum petition from 8% to 4%, and reducing the number of electors filing referendum petition from 5 to 4. There was, the current charter has an incredibly high bar for a referendum related to an ordinance. We didn't want to make it so easy to do that, that every ordinance that comes up gets challenged and requires, you know, opening up an election for, voting on that, but we did want to make it slightly easier for members of the public to pursue referendum processing they so desire. In Article 5, there were no recommended changes. In Article 6, the commission has recommended repealing the office of the sheriff set forth in Section 6, 4. We also, there's discussion around constables. This is kind of a carryover from the 2023 Charter Revision Commission. The consensus was that the, some of the people we'd heard from, that the constables are serving a valuable purpose to the city, and there was a desire to keep that, but the sheriff, we thought, could be phased out. In Section 7, the commission had a, a number of recommendations. Section 7, 1B2, the commission modified the subsection addressing administrative requirements of boards and commissions to require compliance with provisions in lieu of adopting the provisions in an ordinance that establishes the Board of Commission. In 7, 1B2C, the commission repealed the requirement to comply with minority party representation as it was already addressed in 7, 1B7. 7, 1B2D, the commission clarified the requirement for boards and commissions to establish a standard for frequency of meetings unless otherwise addressed by ordinance. 7, 1B4, the commission eliminated a lang- eliminated language that a Board of Commission must not cancel meetings for two consecutive months, since certain entities may not hold monthly meetings. In Section 7, 1E2, the removal standard permits the Board of Commission to establish a standard for attendance by its members for purposes of removal from office. 7, 2A2, the commission recommended that the term of office for the Board of Estiment and Taxation commence on the first day of February on a staggered basis for a term of four years. In Section 7, 2A3, the commission recommended a provision that required the Board of Estiment and Taxation to include at least one member from each of the five council districts. Current language restricts memberships to not more than two members from any one council district belonging to the same party. So, the concern there was that if you had the maximum of two from each district, and you had three districts, you'd now potentially shut out two districts. So, the idea was to add additional geographic representation to the Board of Estiment and Taxation. 7, 2B1A and 7, 2C1A, the commission recommends that members of the Police and Fire Commission serve co-terminously with the mayor, subject to approval by the Common Council. That wraps up Section 7. Section 8, the commission recommended the following: elimination of the word "unclassified" prior to employee in Section 8, 2A2, since that is not a term that's used by the city at all. In Section A2, 8, 2A4, rather, the commission recommends that the appointment of the library director by the mayor, subject to approval by the council, be made following consultation with the Public Library Board. We heard from a couple of people about that during the public participation portion. It is, we've been told, current practice, it's what's happening anyway, so to align with best practices that other library boards, other municipalities are doing, we thought it was worth codifying the journey. Section 8, 3B, the commission recommends the repeal of the role of Board of Estiment and Taxation with regard to the structure of the Office of Corporation Council. And Sections 8, 4B4, 8, 4C2 and 3, 8, 4D, 8, 4E1 and 2, 8, 7B2 and 3, the commission recommends recodification of Sections 14, 2, 14, 3, 14, 4, 14, 5, N, and O, and 14, 6A and M regarding special act authority, and we recommend the council address the delineation of provisions in Sections 8, 7, B2, and 3 for the refinement.
Let me discuss that for one second. As you may recall, in the last Charter revision, we created these two chapters at the end, two articles at the end of the Charter, which were designed to, to fall away by virtue of having sunset to them. We didn't sunset all of them, but this is the attempt to sunset. When we get into the details of this, I will be trying to talk to the Court Counsel's Office, some of the department heads. A couple of departments didn't give us a lot of critical analysis, and so what we ended up doing was moving things into the body of the Charter, and as you will see, there's a lot of special act provision in some of those chapters, just so that we can get rid of that last article. And so, my recommendation is, as we go through this process and then back to the commission, that we'll be able to peer that down further. But you'll see, you'll see some, in those sections, you'll see some massive areas of underscores, much more than there should be, because most of the powers that are delineated there are in the Home Rule Act. So, they're not necessary. I just wanted to emphasize that for some color commentary here.
Thank you, Steve. In Article 9, there were no recommended changes. Article 10, there were a number of changes. Recommended Sections 10, A1 and 2, the commission recommended moving these definitions to Section 2, 2B. In Section 10, 1C4, the commission recommended adding the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer of the Norwalk School System as the well, as well as the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission to the joint hearing panel, which consists of, which currently consists of the mayor, the city CFO, the president of the Common Council, the Chair of the Council Committee authorized to review the budget, the Chair of the Board of Ed, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a member of the BET designated by the mayor. Section 10, 1D and E, the commission recommends recodifying these provisions, which are currently Sections 10, 2A and B, and 10, 11, in order to consolidate the estimate and pre-submission requirements for both the operating and capital budgets in one place. Section 10, 2A, the commission recommends new introductory language in this provision. Section 10, 2B, this is building on the 2023 Commission's affirmation of public accountability, adds another public meeting of the Chief Financial Officers of the City and Board of Education with the committees, the jurisdictions, the committees of the jurisdiction of the council and Board of Education to give members of the public a preview of the budget stack. In Section 10, 3, the commission recommends submitting the operating budget to the Common Council on the same day it is submitted to the Board of Estiment and Taxation, February 15. Section 10, 5, the commission recommends adding a provision that would effectuate the cap established by the mayor in the event that the council fails to do so on or before February 28. Section 10, 5C, the commission recommends deleting the term "taxation" and replacing it with "total appropriations," which seems to align with the actual practice. Section 10, 6, the commission recommends replacing the term "any alterations" with "proposed changes." In Section 10, 10A, the commission proposes elimination of the requirement to establish a limit on expenditures at a special meeting. Section 10, 11A, the commission merged this provision with Section 10, 1D2. Section 10, 11B and C, the commission recommends new provisions that establish submission, notice and publication, and public hearing requirements for the mayor's proposed capital budget and the capital improvement plan. Section 10, 12, the commission recommends minor alterations of the content of the CFO's report. Section 10, 13, the commission recommends restricting the Planning and Zoning Commission hearings to the capital budget, not including the capital improvement plan. The commission also recommends including members of the Common Council among those who should meet with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The recommendations make clear that the sole function of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to assess the alignment of the capital budget with the plan of conservation and development. In Section 10, 15, the commission clarifies the role of the Board of Estiment and Taxation as an advisory function insofar as the capital budget is concerned. Section 10, 16, the commission recommends several changes, including clarification of reinstatement authority and establishing a clear public hearing requirement. And flows out to recommended changes in Section 10, 10, 17, the commission recommends modification of the grounds for termination or abandonment of capital items. In Article 11, this was something that we had initially changed and then recommended going back, but in Article 11, the commission recommends the retention of a mandatory charter revision every five years. Obviously, the council is empowered to, to form a new charter revision commission whenever it so chooses, but the mandatory revision would be, revision commission would be every five years. Article 12, no proposed changes. And Articles 13 and 14 will be repealed or recodified as discussed in the other sections. These are pieces that we've moved into, or sort of recommended moving into other sections of the charter. So, that is the very brief overview. Oh, yes, sorry. That, so that covers those, the, the sections of the charter. There were some additional issues that we were not able to address, but we recommend that the council consider in the coming months, years. First of which, many municipalities have experienced difficulty recruiting members to serve on boards and commissions. Something to consider, and the second issue is related to the matter of diversity on boards and commissions. It better reflects the composition of our community, you know, in terms of geography, race, ethnicity, gender, these are things that found their way into other communities' charters. We did not, and of course, you have time to do that here. It's something we heard from both members of the commission and members of the public who came to the participation portions of our meetings, and it is, it is something we would recommend that the council look into.
Thanks very much, Tyler, and to all the members of the Charter Revision Commission for all of your work. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this and a great deal of discussion. Most, many of us have watched, you know, a number of the meetings, if not all, some, you know, more, more than others. And what we are, of course, going to need is, you know, the time to dig in and, you know, read through the actual change within the charter. But we have, you know, plenty of time for questions tonight, in case anyone would like to address the commission. I do want to make a request. If there are questions, and, and this is on behalf of Ms. Young, although I don't believe she has zoomed in to, if there are questions regarding the four-year terms, to please save that for last, and then I will leave the room. I will be recusing myself in all of those discussions, so. Yes.
I still have more asking questions at this meeting.
We can ask some que- questions so that, so that we're able to do our work.
I'm absolutely not prepared, and I would have said a lot of questions if I, it was communicated to us that we had not to ask the questions. Okay.
I'm not. Oh, no, we're, we can ask some questions. Does anyone have any?
Sorry, I was just gonna see if anyone else on the commission had something that I missed that you thought was.
I just want to make some honest good. I just want to comment. On basically, first of all, thank you. But there's some things we disagreed on, so I just want to bring up, I, as a member of the commission, I was disappointed that the minority representation was not voted on and allowed to go forward to the council. We were down to a vote. There were several, there were three different versions that were before. The last one, which did not pass, was kind of simplified and see if we couldn't get something done, was that allowing two of the outlawed seats to be minority representation. Just getting involved. One of the other ones allowing each district. And I was getting, trying to get something through, it failed. But I disagree with that decision as. I don't want to say, but look enough of these pictures and see what I saw. There's a lot of diversity among parties.
Sorry, Doug, I, I can't hear you. I apologize.
I'm sorry, okay. I'm saying, just Tommy, if you looked at the pictures on the wall here and look at the ones I served on, there, there's a lot of extremes one way or the other. But we are only one of the two communities in the state of Connecticut that does not do this until elected officials. So, state of Connecticut, it was some passing the enabling ordinances for this, so it was a good idea. I still think the council should reconsider that. I did vote for adding the additional members to each district, but I don't necessarily agree that's the right solution for the problem. I brought up early on the fact that city of Nowak, once it got past the 80s, grew by 24,000 people, and went through its populations into 70s for a long time. No council person has been added since that time. So, if I think a more correct, I think a fix that would allow more diversity, more neighborhood involvement, and more ideas being thrown out, and how things are affected to have actually more voting districts, and creating more council seats for those voting districts. This was kind of my head compromise to try and get more people involved, but it's getting, you know, three people now involved in a district, and I know most parties, even, you know, both sides of the aisle of the earth has trouble getting two sometimes, so I thought if you add more voting districts in, in certain areas and that, certainly going to help the other neighborhoods to get a better voice, and other people that don't have any voice in places. Those were, those were my two big things, Steve. I'm being honest with you. As a former member of the council, and I guess some of that, I guess that's why they put me there, and maybe why they started, they put me there. I, I was not in favor, you know, changing out the council being charged with the capital budget and the amount picked by the Board of Estiment and Taxation. I thought it was a necessary check in the system, because I always fear that sometimes elected officials, the people in the public, you know, in the flesh and election years, it's nothing, no reflection here, certainly enough of them to know that it happens. That the capital budget may put us in jeopardy, including Mary Triple A Brady at some point, or utilize some of that funds that should be, that should be operating, but to make it happen shouldn't. So, I, I wouldn't, I'm just sad, in my view, that I think it should be questionable. I would leave, it was me, I would leave the Board of Estiment and Taxation out of being able to reset the cap, kind of reverse what you do. And then.
There are some charter revision members on Zoom.
Yeah. I have one comment to make, if that's okay with you guys.
Please.
Okay, so, the only issue, I, I think Tyler and I voted against keeping the, the mandatory charter review at five years. It was our view that it was, although well-intentioned at the time, given that the Charter Revision Commission two years ago did a good job at reordering and, and sort of making the charter more readable, and this time around, we, you know, we've done a lot with the four-year term for mayor, four-year term for common council, et cetera, that having a review every five years was potentially disruptive at this point, particularly because the Common Council is able to convene a Charter Revision Commission at any time that it, that it wishes, next year, or the year after next, or year six or seven, it doesn't really, it didn't really matter. But in terms of a mandatory charter review, to, to have it every five years after such an extensive review the last two years was, you know, would be, would sort of make things less predictable in how we do things in the city and potentially be disruptive, because you know, because there might be changes that are made without knowing what the consequences, for instance, are of the four-year term for mayor, four-year term for common council, the staggered effect of these elections, et cetera. And so, for those reasons, but primarily because the Common Council can convene a Charter Revision Commission anytime it wishes, in light of the work we've done the last two years collectively, that insisting on a five-year charter review was, was not necessary and not especially a productive or wise. So, that's, that was my view, and I think it was Tyler's view as well.
Thank you. John, did you have something that, please?
Hello, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just want to add some additional information related to Commissioner Camacho's comments about the charter review process. The current charter has a five-year requirement. There are many other towns in Connecticut that have similar requirements, five years. I know there's one town that has a four-year requirement. And I, oh, also, I would like to thank the council for appointing me to this commission. It's been a terrific experience and education, and I'm so pleased that, I hope I have been able to help to serve the city along with the other commissioners for this important process. I've learned that charter revision is an important process. There are changes that continuously happen within our city, within our society, and as a result, this type of governing document does deserve to be reviewed on a regular basis. I've served on this commission since it was convened last year. I don't believe that the commission had, and its process have added instability or disruption to city governance or city activities. And there was a proposal to extend the required charter revision from five years to 10 years, to change it from five years to 10 years. That proposal was voted on. It was defeated 7 to 2 with a view that five years is actually, serves the residents well by allowing the city to participate in the governance process in this way. Charter Revision Commission, as you Charter revision commissions, as you know, require public hearings and are also, at least if they're. Following good practices will invite comments and participation from the community, which is very important. Also, I believe that there is some unfinished business that hopefully future charter revision commissions will be able to undertake. One is actually, the taxing districts are a relic of the nineteen thirteen. Consolidation of three or so towns into a single one. It's my view that one of the jobs of government is to improve the efficiency and operations of government. The taxing districts, while nice in some respects, do not add to the efficiency of government. I think they do the opposite. There are no functions performed by the taxing districts that cannot be performed by the city government itself. I was told by more wise and experienced members of the commission that that is hopeless. No one will ever propose. Rolling up the taxing districts. That's politically. Impossible. And that may be the case, I don't know, but I think that it's something that I hope can be considered in the future. There are a bunch of other things that I think also should be considered for future commissions. That we were not able to get to or which were not approved by this commission. And I hope those will be considered, but I've spoken long enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to one thing that Mr. Levin said. Yeah, that's true, that in the last vote, that proposal to make it. To suggest that it be ten years rather than five years was. Was voted on, and there was a vote of seven to two to keep it at five years. But I would note that, and Mr. Levin, I think, neglected to point out that, or to. Say that initially, the overwhelming majority of the of the of the commission felt that. A ten-year review was more appropriate, and it was really only in the last meeting. After minority party representation was voted down, that some of the commission members changed their vote and suggested that. We have a review every five years, which really highlights the potential disruption that having a review that often, a mandatory review. That often would pose.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the commission that would like to share your process or thoughts? And if Carl.
The only thing I would say, I want to thank you again. This is my second commission. What I would ask your help in, and the biggest thing that I've complained about for a long time is communication with our citizens. A lot goes on with you folks that people don't know about. There's a lot goes on when we have commissions that people don't know about. And I would just ask if we think of some way to better communicate. We are unfortunately relying on media coverage in Norwalk. They're nobody's fault. It's just the way it is. I'm already getting a call. But the other thing is, is that. When we know we're going to have commission openings, no matter what the commission is. I would love to see the council members get involved. In soliciting your districts or helping the city solicit. Let people know that there's an opening on the police commission, there's an opening on this commission. And ask for anybody that is interested to contact their councilperson. And then you can go through the vetting process or whatever you want to do. But there's a lot of people that I've run into. In my time being in this town and having worked with the government, is they'd say, well, if I didn't know that was going to happen. I would love to be a part of that. And that's probably a lot more people than we realize. Anyway. I want to also thank all the other members of the commission. As I said, this is my second one. The first one was very well done. This one also, Tyler did a great job. And Steve is always, and things went, I think, as smoothly as they possibly can. I actually mentioned to Stephen last week at the last meeting. That it reminds me of a quote from Ben Franklin, who says, I'll never draft anything for the public that has to be approved by committee. And I think that's true words ever spoken. Anyway, thank you very much. Keep up the good work. And that's all I have to say. As you, I'm just some advice to look downstream and upstream. We look at for your term deciding for within, I mean, I'm on record, I know, I like accountability every two years. It's got to do with other. Physicians that are unelected. That now coincide into what we consider an off-year for a mayoral election. And we have a lot of concern with this, who shows up to mayor elections, totalized versus national election. That there are other offices and that would be affected by that, that you make them for your terms or not. And then you would have to have a discussion, I think, with the district's taxing district, because they're every two years, because they're staggered terms. So, kind of like, how do we get community involvement? We want to have more committee involved and not less committee involved on the election. Because it's bigger. That's why they did the change for the board estimate, because it was kind of, you know, it did get changed.
Doug, I'm having a difficult time hearing you again. I apologize.
Well, I'm done.
I am losing my hearing as I get older, so it could be me.
Do you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes, I hear you.
There you go. Okay. I have one, one drafting point and pedagogical point. To make as you're reviewing the charter. Commissioner Clark actually came up with a really good suggestion the other day. And as you're reading the charter, if you see words in the charter, I'll give you the example he came up with, it was de novo. The average member of the public, in fact, many lawyers don't know what de novo means. I'd like to think they should, but some do not. When you see words like that, please, I'm going to be looking at it and please note it. And what I'd like to do, I did it with de novo, and I'm going to look at this during this process, see if I find any other words. That are hard to understand, bring it to our attention, and we should fix it. We should have a defined element in it on the page that's used. It's probably not a term that's going to be used throughout the document, but if we have terms like that, we can. Define and explain all the better, not a earth-shattering point. But I just wanted to bring it up because I thought it was a really keen observation by Jim Clark.
And I do have one last point about the staggered four-year term for common council and four-year term for mayor. The reason for the staggered, I'm not sure that it's, if it's obvious or if it's been mentioned, but it's so that each operates as a check against the other. So that there was this concern that, that in a given election, you can have a sweep of one party or the other. And that then you're stuck with that, with that governing body, both in the executive and legislative branch for four years. And so the thought was to stagger the terms so as to to provide a check, one on the other. And also so that in each election year. You you will have an election of significance. It's not going to be like an off-year election where you have the mayor. His vote is, let's say, the mayor gets a four-year term, the common council continues with a two-year term. You will have a year in which it's just the common council, not the mayor. And we all know that that the voters tend to turn out in larger numbers when there's a municipal election or mayor. Election or presidential election, but in off-years, they tend not to vote. So that was. Also part of the reasoning to make sure that every election there is, it would be an election of significance, because the Board of Ed. Would also, you know, has a staggered term. And the, and the taxing districts run every two years as well.
Are there any overarching questions about to the, oh, you want to share something? Yeah.
Yeah, one brief point. One of the goals is to make the charter more readable and more understandable for the public. And one idea that was presented was that. Maybe we can consider having synopses of each chapter. That's in layman's language, so you know what's going to happen in that particular chapter. That way for the citizens, when they're looking at the charter, they can see, you know, with each chapter and what it's going to deal with, without all the. Specific detailed language. And I think that might help citizens be more engaged with the charter. So that's not really a substantive change to the charter, just a way maybe to present it in a fashion that could be understandable. And to hopefully engage our citizens more in the governance of our city.
You know, our, our, our purpose here is to understand the thinking of the Charter Revision Commission and their, in their recommendations. So. Any questions? What we have to do now is our work. We, and so. Yes, please.
It might be good for the public who are watching us to, to just reiterate what the. The steps are, the next steps, because it is going to the ballot.
Yes, that's the next.
Be voting yes or no on it.
Yeah, so that's what we're about to do. So.
President, just very quickly, I had one, just to watch, two technical questions I wanted to quickly ask. If you don't mind. So the recommendation to change. The terms of the police and fire commission to be co-termious with the mayors. Is that, is the thinking behind that, that because those commissions have. Authority over the hiring and firing of the police and fire commissioners, those should be sort of aligned with the mayor's authority as opposed to, for instance. The BET and other commissions that don't align, are not co-terminals with the mayor. I just wanted to quickly understand the thinking behind that particular change.
That was, is that not how it operates now? We were under the impression that that was how, that it was, if you're changing the term. Of the mayor, you need to align the commissions as well.
Okay, so I'm, so that was just a clarification of the four years.
Yes.
Okay, the word was co-terminous, so that's why I was, I was confused. I thought there was a change there, but that's fine. Thank you. That's, that's a very helpful clarification. And then Mr. Levin mentioned eliminating the taxing districts. I just wanted to be clear so that we're not introducing confusion here. My understanding was the taxing districts are creations of state law, even though they appear in this charter. So I just want to confirm that that is in fact correct, that that is a separate conversation.
I was going to raise that, thank you. To the council member, right here in this room, you may remember, at the beginning of this very process, before the commission was appointed. We had a meeting probably a year ago in June, where the tax in districts were here. We wanted to address the issue upfront. I had been under the impression that we could make modifications, and then we discovered that evening. That there's actually a charter revision process for the districts themselves. And so we chose not to touch anything in that chapter. Because again, it's, it's the third rail, and, and we really don't have jurisdiction to do so. So it's in the body of the document, maybe at some point in the future, you can separate it completely. We've created a separate part for it, so. When you print out your charter, the essence of the charter for your purposes is part one. And for the taxing is part two, but it was very clear that there's a statute that allows for charter revision in that process. I was going to tell Commissioner Levin that after the meeting. And so if you want to do charter revision in each of the taxing districts. Or try to dissolve the taxing districts, there's procedures for doing that, but it wouldn't be through our charter. Thank you for the question.
And there was, that actually brings up another point. Councilwoman Nigel Skagner, with respect to common council salaries, that is also. Governed by state law, it has to occur by referendum. And so the idea was that maybe that might be changed on the state level. To allow local legislative bodies to set their salaries or, 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 or set a mechanism. So that another body, let's say the BET or someone else could set the salary. But at the moment, it can only be done by referendum. And so the thinking was if we left it. If we left a dollar amount in the charter, if the law were to change, our charter still requires us to do it by referendum so that. So it is now, the recommendation is that it be set in accordance with law, so that if the state should change. Should no longer require that it be done by referendum, that the, that the common council can do so by ordinance or in some way. Either affect their salaries directly or establish a process for the salaries to be set.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. That is helpful. Could I just get clarification on that, though? I thought that because the. Charter itself is, is approved, that that would qualify as a referendum sufficient to allow. The change in salaries, so it could be.
If we had, if we had set a salary amount, a dollar amount, yes, that's right, we could have done it this time. We would have been stuck with that dollar amount until the next charter and so on and so forth. Whereas we thought that giving the, the common council the flexibility to set their salaries as. As the circumstances permit. That that would be an easier way of doing it, rather than the more clunky way of doing it via referendum. But that, of course, requires that the state law change, that. And so, and that the common council or a legislative body be permitted to affect. The salaries of the members of that body in some way other than to, through charter revision.
Madam President, if I may, I want to try to address both your colleague and our distinguished commissioner. In answering this question the way I am. Your colleague and you have sat through proceedings where we talked about these issues, about the structure of legislative body, how legislative bodies are compensated. And one of the schemes, the schemes, one of the approaches that we have taken. Throughout the state is to establish a baseline compensation level for members of councils. Subject to a cost of living increase. So the provision would say X dollars plus to a cola. But your cola is limited by the state constitution to, if you're in a four-year term, at the beginning of the term, prior to the term and prior to the third year of the term. And then you would have an automatic increase. And the theory is, because you've gone through a referendum, that would be a valid. Foundation for your compensation. To the point that was made by the commission, so that is one way it's been done. It's been done that way in Hartford. It's been done that way in New Haven. Trying to think who else has it. Waterbury might have it. To the commissioner's point, you would still have the ability, if the other statute goes away. To just deal with it by. By budget. And it's the council's role, even under the limited role you have to address compensation issues. It has to ultimately go into the budget that the Board of Estimate would be addressing on a line item basis. But you would have the ability both to benefit from the baseline. Provision that you have, plus whatever else you had, if in fact the referendum requirement goes away. So there is a way to address it, even with the restrictions of the referendum requirement. And I will tell you, there was an effort, in fact, our distinguished member of this body, Mr. Levin, tried to. Encourage members of the legislative, of the legislature to deal with it this year. We had CCM working on it. And it went nowhere. It's one of those pieces of legislation that doesn't affect, it affects maybe seventeen communities in the state. So no one's taking it up, because it's only the larger cities that are going to have compensation for their council members. And so there was really no constituency in Hartford for addressing the issue. It seems like an easy fix, but that's the reality of the situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do need, we do need to wrap up because IT is going to need a few minutes to change over to the next meeting. And so let's just go through the process. And I would like to, you know, invite you at times, you know, as we may have questions. Through this workshop process to attend meetings, and we will make sure to invite you. And so, so as, as this process, the common council has forty-five days. To, to complete this process as of the May thirtieth. Transmittal to the town clerk and to the common council. And so we have set here on the agenda. Our workshop meetings and deliberations. So on June twelfth, next week at six P M, we will have a. Our first workshop. On June eighteenth. A second workshop if needed. A second workshop if needed. On June twenty-fourth, that is before a a common council meeting, we will have a public hearing and deliberation, that will happen at six o'clock as well. Um and then um on July eighth. The uh council will vote on the charter revision at at our July eighth meeting. And then confer on July ninth with the Charter Revision Commission if needed, if we are going to recommend. Uh different changes that that we would like to see. And so then um Steve, I'd just like to ask you to just remind us of the process then and the dates then for the uh ballot. I believe we'll have to, that's. Late August, early September, we'll have to have the language for the ballot.
So so what what you have here is, in this phase of the process, you are looking at their work, you could accept it. There's no changes whatsoever, you can accept it as a final report and prove it, and then you get to. Through the ballot questions, because the ballot question is a function for the council. If you don't, if you have questions, you have issues, under the statute, your job here is either to approve the the charter or to provide recommendations. For the commission to consider, and so the commission has up to thirty days. None of the commissions I've worked with have ever used the full thirty days, because we're gonna start getting into July and and August, and then. During that period of time, Madam President, we have an expectation that members of the council will be at those meetings, because we want to make sure. Uh as what I call a mediated process takes place, so that we can try to narrow the issues. And if you have recommendations, try to see if we can work out a compromise so that when it comes back to you in the last phase. You're approving it and not disapproving it, um and so um so i- if it goes along uh the lines that we have here on the schedule, July eighth will be the day you vote. On your recommendations or on the final approval of the charter, um we have a meeting scheduled. For the next day, which would be the conferral meeting, so everything would be reversed. They'll be up there and you'll be down here, or however it'll be done, um and um and and then we will. Know what those issues are, I'll be working with both of you to try to uh hone in on those issues. They then have those um uh up to thirty days and you really have to act by sometime. In August, by mid-August, um and then the town clerk has to get it into the ballot questions in the Secretary of State's office. By the first week in Ju- in September. And I also recommend and will be recommending again this year that you do an explanatory text. And the town clerk has to have that done before A B's go out, so that's.
Thank you very much. Wow, okay, um so um we have our work to do, we have our work cut out for us. Uh and so uh at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. There actually are not, we need a few minutes for the turnover for the seven o'clock meeting, yes, but please, um you know, uh you can email us. And we can um. Address whatever your comment or questions, okay, thank you, and so all my favorite motion to adjourn. Okay, um meeting adjourned, thank you.